Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest.
I think it's not the place to do it.
Why does he need your permission to do that? He's the town manager of our town.
Does this what more meaning?
So what's it? He can step, come on Craig. He has the authority above all of you to set up a Zoom meeting. He doesn't need your permission. He has more rights and more laws that back him than you guys.
I'm trying to say, you think you want to ask what more did they wanted to do it? I think he should tell us what more he wants to do.
I think he should say, look, you got Cynthia coming down there with her head all crazy. I'm gonna set it up. And so he has to run the computer that night.
Yep.
I just, I find the excuses and the reasons over and over again. And it's just, every other town, when you look at their websites, they have Zoom meetings, they have links on their front page. They're very clear about what's going on in this time that we're in. Everybody's intentions are high, but I am not going to just step aside from asking questions of the select board because we're in a pandemic.
Thank you.
You have restricted residents from participating in a public meeting. By having an here and the open today.
Well, I mean...
Whether it's 10 or 25, whatever number, you have restricted or Miss Alice Kadon from coming to her own right or public meeting.
I mean, I'm picking on Alice because I know she's one that's been participating in Zoom. But I don't know how many more there are that might want to.
Well, look at you guys, just look at who's been there since the last year. There's been a couple that don't want to go to the public meeting. So...
Thank you.
Yeah, right? I guess we thought we were doing the right thing and did it. I think a little bit too, we were having this town meeting coming up. We were not underground, we didn't anybody input for this meeting that's coming up. We were interrupting, he was, last minute, we couldn't now go back to the school, high school, so we're all scrambling, we go, okay, now we're going to have this. I think the intention was to have an open meeting here where we could have a discussion.
But here's, I'm not saying you shouldn't have meetings.
I know.
Yeah. Obviously, you have to have select board meetings.
Right.
And I was told today that the town of Westminster doesn't even have their own Zoom account. That they're using Fact TV's.
Well, that's true. Yeah, that's a good word perhaps.
Well, get your own account so you can do it whenever you want. Hopefully, we won't have to do this forever. I get it, and I didn't, I kind of prevented you saying today that I wanted it that way because it was convenient for me. You said, I know it's convenient to stay home and watch it from home. That, I would much rather be here. I don't want this going on. I don't want us to be locked in our houses like that. But for you to imply that the reason I wanted that way, it was easy for me to participate...
I did not mean you.
Well, even if it's somebody else, we are in a time where this is what everybody's doing. It is not just Westminster being picked on. Everybody's having to deal with this. He's doing grievance hearings through Google Hangout with people that have never used a computer before.
That's what we're doing.
It's not easy.
Yes, I know. So we'll plan to have, whether we decide to have it only on Zoom, which I hope not, or in a meeting just us in here, or in the some room that we would get, and then, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then have a Zoom option at the same time, that's what we'll do.
I think...
All agreed?
Agreed.
Any more to discuss on that? Yeah, okay. Thank you Cynthia.
I have a question for you, Diva.
Yeah?
You just said a meeting just between yourselves.
Um...
So was that a not an open meeting? Is that an executive session?
No, it would be a place for the board, it would be a room where only, we only have enough room for seven people, but we would have a Zoom option so people could participate by computer.
Still the open meeting Zoom, instead of us getting different rooms like we are now. I should write you a chat, is that, do you remember?
Yeah, I just, I just want a clarification on the, how many of us, and you answered that. If Zoom is there, what about people who can't do Zoom?
Well, so very nice, well, that's a very big question, I agree. Well, there's people that don't have computers who can't do it.
But they're able to do it.
Oh.
Listen, I am not saying that I love this method and that I'm not... I'm just wondering why we think it's okay for us to have eight, nine, 10, 11, 12 people when I can't do that at my own house outside right now?
We're going out of business.
I don't understand that. Who told you guys that was happening? And maybe I don't know, maybe I'm not understanding the guidelines from our health department, but I want to know who told you guys it was okay to do that? Because if it is, I'm going to open my house up on Sunday.
I don't think we asked anybody if it was okay.
I didn't understand the question she was asking.
I listened to the governor today. He said no group gatherings of more than 10 people. Friday, he's hoping he is going to be able to say, because we've done so well in Vermont, that it will be 25. I'm asking, who said it was okay because we're a municipality and a select board that it's okay for you to do that? Because maybe I just don't understand. Maybe I'm misunderstanding the guidelines that I'm trying to follow.
Now, you're asking about this meeting or you're asking about the town?
No, I'm asking about this meeting.
We were, with 10 people, we were...
And you told me yesterday 25.
I told you 25 because you were asking about the town.
No, I asked about the select board meeting and you said 25. Well, that's a whole nother story because I'm going to hire a team that's 25, but whatever.
We got permission from the state to have it outside.
Right, so we don't get accused, let's talk about this first.
Okay.
10 people.
10 people.
We're now over 10. And I'm not going to be the police and run into anybody and tell anybody. I mean, we're all, I feel like at safe distance or whatever. To me, some of it's a little overload and I wish it wasn't like it is. But I'm just curious why we think it's okay as a board? And this shouldn't come as a surprise because I asked you this today and I asked you this tonight. And maybe you didn't look into it after I talked to you. I mean, I asked Russ about it yesterday. So it's here for here. There's nothing we can do, but I just...
Thank you. Any other public comments? Discussion? Unfinished business. Start from the Hemwood Hill. Do you want us to start that, Russ, or?
Uh, Russ asked for personal appearance by Mark Hickering. He's declined from VTRAN, but he did write a letter, it's in your packet, about Hemwood and the discussion we had with him on site back months ago. I'm not actually sure when the first meeting was, but...
Right, so do you want to read that or all? So, one of the options that we were sort of considering was maybe just putting in guardrails and a mirror or some, some way to make it safe. Because there was some discussion about the safety of the ravine, but Mark Hickering says, "After discussing the field, I'm in agreement with your preferred course of action, that course of action being to shift the roadway to the west away from the ravine. In my opinion, this is the best long-term solution, any temporary slope option in the existing ravine will most likely fail due to the steepness of the terrain and erosive forces of the water flowing down the ravine." So I mean, to me, that says, that's an engineer saying that our, our option to keep that road safe is, is the, the big option of extending the roadway to the inside.
It's still safe. Even when you're done with it, that means, why would you want that guardrail? Guardrails would be the safest thing.
Just guardrails or?
Well, I think we can look at some different ways of doing it, but still, guardrails would be the quickest way to make the road safe.
Right.
Then we'll have to figure out how to run the corner by. To do all that work and not have guardrails in it, so now people are going to go faster, that's all. They're still going to be going faster, and if you end up going over that edge, you're in serious trouble.
Yeah, I agree one more, you shouldn't have guardrails, but I guess...
I think we gotta fix the guardrails and fix, install guardrails and fix the corner for now, even if it ends up being one lane at least so you can see around the corner.
That's right. Basic safety, right. Yeah, I mean, we went over this several times, and then I guess for a while I had some hopes that we could go with the, just leave it, because things are much different now than they were two months ago financially and...
But I do think the guardrails are, I mean, this is a bright future spot, well, it really is.
Right. Yeah. And, and I guess the other issue that we still haven't resolved, and I, I sent an email to Larry, and I have not heard from him, is in the, the article that was passed, does that mean we can only spend $37,005 every year, the way it's written?
Yeah, I thought, I could be wrong.
Right, so, we, what's going to make a big difference in how the look is going?
I wonder, I, I'm going to ask this question, Marshall and the boys, you remind me of today. We have, we talked at all about the, any money that's available through the state and, you know, so when they're looking at this picture, it's not just what the cost is, what part of this money you pay for.
We have one guaranteed grant, it's, it's called Grantson Aid, but no, we have not looked at Structures Grant. We were told that we probably could get a portion of our Structures Grant, which is, we're eligible for like 150, 160, we could do a portion, 50, but that would take us out of running for next year where we would be full amount. So when the discussion went that if we were going to borrow, then one year's time, we'll give us, get us started in the right direction, and then we can apply for grants to offset that, that 170.
Thank you, we'd be good to look into grants right now.
We have a grant that, that complies with what we voted on in town meeting. That's all I could do at that point, to get guarantees. Now that we have a project scope, we know what we can do. Next year, I can apply for the Structures Grant, Grantson Aid again. Don't think there's another one that I can think of right off the top of my head, but there's at least another couple that I can...
And that would be after the test?
It would be after we put it out to bid and get the actual prices, yes.
So to apply for these grants, I'm assuming, I don't know, you need to know the, the estimated cost, but also...
No, you need to know the exact cost.
And the scope of the project also? I would assume, we can't just say we, we want some money and then we'll tell you what the project is.
That's typically what they ask for.
Russ, it's funny to me, because for Cynthia originally, I was 28, 20 to me, the 80,000 budget contribution, was that coming from them?
It's coming from our stone budget, but we also have in-stock gravel for the final dressing and our grader and our sign.
So why are there 80,000 available this year? We took the 80,000 plus the 37, we didn't have that much to spend the first year.
Yes.
Okay, so we're not spending 37, because that ain't even our money.
Right, we have an additional 37,5.
Well, for now, now we're talking about over $100,000 to spend the third year.
We could, we could, yes.
That's quite the scope of the job for you.
It's really not cash out of pocket, it is some materials and time.
But the other hand, that's, that's a chunk of money. We can look at the guardrail and look at how much it's going to cost to fix that corner for right now, at least the first, to make it safe and open the road at the edge, they can see around the corner. For that, for even 75 or something like that, we should build, maybe do it.
But if you do the guardrails at the elevation that you've got now, then they're either going to have to be all moved or you're, you're going to live with the base that we've got. That's what we're, that's what we need to know from you so we can proceed, is what scope of work are you leaning towards? Are you going to do the whole project or are you going to do, keep the bed at the elevation it's at now, do the best you can widening and put guardrails with mirrors?
Can you come back to that message on that?
I can. It's easier to know exactly what you're, what you're after.
Well, now I know, now you're saying there's going to be more than 37 to spend. If I can keep on saying...
Cynthia, can you go through that numbers again? I don't understand what you're saying, that how we got more than 37.
Rick, if you look at the sheet, the 280...
Yeah, Ross, you're playing the numbers game, yeah.
You brought up how we get the progressive money, which is the same.
Right, there's a budget contribution of E.
Which is our money that already goes in.
Which is, I'm thinking, just, just part of our regular budget.
Tyne, walk, materials in stock, and...
Or road to move later on.
And then the 30,000, which is actually 25,5, because that's what you told me in the meeting today. So I don't know why you took 30 if it's 25,5.
Because we can't spend the 25 without the other 5.
Right, but, so the other 5 is out, so that's...
Because there's greater, our, of our trees and...
Right, I know, but Russ, you, this is where I think you and I lose, lose ourselves in just expressing things. Because I'm a numbers person and I'm very, just, one plus one equals two to me. When you tell me we're getting a grant for 30, that to me means the town is getting $30,000. Like, somebody's handing us 30,000, that's not what it is. It's 25,000 they're giving us, and then we're going to do some, some matching to that. So why I get myself so twisted and why I get frustrated is because what you're giving me is not actually what's happening. Maybe the way you're presenting it, you feel that it is, because you maybe think of, people understand that part of this is really our money that we have to contribute or material or whatever. But it's not. It's another $5,000 that we have to come up with in something, either cash, labor, or whatever.
We can get the 25,5, not like that, we have the 25.
Right, so that's why I get suspicious. It's like, that's not right. That's not a number that matches what's actually happening. So it's frustrating for a numbers person when that happens, and it seems to be a common thing that happens when I ask a question. So I don't think you're maliciously trying to mislead me. I think that you understand it, but it's, I'm, I was a town manager, I've done grants. To me, that means that our match is in here under the budget contribution and we're getting 30. I just want to make sure everybody knows it's not 30, it's 25,5. So $5,000 out of scope for this project is not huge, but every little bit adds up, and it's just... And so, I'll stop there, but the other question I have is, if we don't do the entire project, does the 30,000 or 25,5 still stand? Because from where I have been, if you don't complete the project that you said you were going to do when you applied for money, they don't give you the money because you didn't do what you said you were going to do. And what, from what I'm reading, that what we said we were going to do is this entire project at once. So I want to be sure that if we do just a portion of it, that they're still willing to give us this money. Because when they give you money, they want to see something finished, they don't want to see it partially finished. Because then we run the risk of having to give the money back.
The Grantson Aid is a great program in that all you have to do is show approval that you're complying with access for in-fettering drainage and roadwork to make it safer and well-drinked roadbed.
Okay, I'm requesting...
That money, that money will come with the project that we, we have stolen.
I'm requesting to see from the better, the Grantson Aid program, which apparently runs through the Regional Planning Commission. I'm looking for something from the Regional Brant Planning Commission saying that that's okay. That they're okay with us only doing partial project, and that we'll get the 25,5.
I have a question. If we decide to do the railing of just the guardrails and the mirrors, is that money available to us also? If we do the, if we decide to down, down...
Downgrade the whole project?
Downgrade the whole project.
Is...
Would that money be available to us then?
For the improvement of the roadbed?
Yeah.
I'm not positive that they would cover it. I'm not sure.
But the, it would be to widen the corner so that you can see around.
Anything that pertains to drainage and, and road safety, they will cover.
But what, what bothers me is the engineer's assessment of that roadside, that ravine, that apparently not stable or not stable for long term. Is that right, Chuck, is that how you interpret it is? Yeah? You, he had a letter that said, that I read, that shifting the roadway to the west, any temporary slope option in the existing ravine will most likely fail due to the steepness of the terrain and erosive forces of the water flowing down the ravine. I mean, what that says to me is an engineer says that we have to do the full road or...
You've got to let it create itself. I don't, I'm only one person. I don't, we took of the 80, we took 63 of the 80, we got the 37. We have permission really this year to spend $100,000 right now from the vote, because that's how much money they approve 37 and get it. But if, so if you only spent 63, so if we go find what's going to cost the guardrail, maybe we can ask over the cost if we had to move them five years, at least get the guardrail installed, see if we can put drainage, then we can go back to voters next year and see if we can get the rest of it.
I'm just saying, maybe it's that nobody's ever gone off that. That, to me, is astonishing.
I'm just worried that when you fix the road, you're too lazy, you're always going to push that person to the outside, and it's only going to take much, and now you're going to go over, but still a ravine, you're still going over the ravine. I just can't believe you do it without installing guardrails.
I mean, that, to me, that's the basic that we should do this year is guardrails, some kind of visibility thing, and you're thinking some drainage too.
I just got to mention for drainage, and I don't know, you just need to come back. We don't have permission from the voters who will spend all the money. I mean, we just don't have, we didn't ask for it, right?
Right.
But if I'm looking at the numbers, I think we can come up with $100,000, which is a chunk of the, of the work. Let's see what kind of phases what we can do. Because even if they gave us permission, we might only spend $100,000 the first year, it might be a two-year project, I don't know. I just know, I think as a board, we're pretty set that, hey, we've got to have some guardrails and we've got to fix the corner and some drainage. If it's 110 or it's at 90, I think that at least we wouldn't be wasting our time. Then we can come back next year, decide to go to the voters and say, hey, if it was 280, we spent this much, we need another, we need the rest of the money that we asked for, but we don't want to borrow the money. Or whatever.
Well, I thought, Russ, that you put the guardrails in and then you did the work, like you lost, you lost the money for the guardrails, I mean, that you couldn't use it, or I thought...
You lost, you lost, they can put them, but you can pick, you can remove them and use them again.
Is that what you said?
Lift them, you can lift them.
Yeah, you can lift them and move them, and that's what I'm saying, you might get a...
Yeah, but you just have to get them to the right height.
Go with mine, well, yours could be mine, it's not mine, you're mine. Something up the guardrail.
No, we'll say we have the same company, we'll come back and remove them again, or pick them up.
Yeah, I would say, you can just pick them up, you know.
Well, you can, but if they fail after we do it, somebody goes over there and gets killed, then we go and flip them out. It won't be us, but they did that on backwards East Road, where they're paving down the hill, we hired them, they came and they lifted all those guardrails to make up for, because they were put in to move them to begin with. They weren't compliant, so they fixed them. Once we own the guardrails, they're, they're a good investment, let's put it that way.
Yeah.
I don't know, I would like to see Russ go back to what, what $100,000 would do for this year's project, what kind of scope? Anybody need a guardrail, including the guardrails?
And, and the mirrors.
Whatever it takes to be around the corner. We might build fixtures and we don't need mirrors.
Right. You think we wouldn't need mirrors?
If we fix the corner this year, I don't know, I wouldn't know until they, somebody came and just said, if you let the road alone, fix the drainage, fix the corner, put guardrails, can that make it safe so you wouldn't need mirrors to dish you through?
Right. That's the basic we don't need this year. Which would not have been us from doing more.
No, thanks, oh, I mean, we got to come back, we got to come back and see if it makes sense.
Yeah, I, I definitely think we should get right to work on the guardrails.
Yeah, yeah, I definitely think we have to address the safety issue this year as much as we can. Kevin, yeah?
I have no idea what you're going to do. Me either.
Okay, so, so Russ, come back with what we can do with $100,000 so that we can do the work on it, get that work done this year. And for Cynthia, you're going to get her the wording that says...
From Wyndham right now.
That the grant is just basically, as long as we use it for improving drainage. We don't have to be any more specific about that. Yeah?
I might be late, I've heard most of these conversations, but this might be a late question. In the beginning, was there an engineering company that took you all's question about this road? Our questions are A, B, C. An engineering company goes out, they do points, survey of points, salt measure, whatever an engineer does, and says, if you want this road to be A, B, C, you have to do this. And this building was built, an engineering company came in here and said, you need so much fill, you want concrete, you need extra concrete close to being, here's an engineering site to build this building. Then they decided out table. You guys are talking about digging a little bit here, doing some trees, raising some grass, you put guardrails in, then you might have to extend them. Is that fixing what you want to do with this entire road?
That is not, totally not.
You need a, you need a defrayed group of whatever that name is, or Morrison now goes, but you need an engineer to tell you what is wrong with this.
Russ, there's two things. Because you can get someone to come in and make an engineer who looks like 91. Or you engineer, you engineer, they say, okay, this is our minimum requirement.
So the first thing, like, is it...
We're telling, we want this to be a safe turn, we want nobody to fall off the edge. What is your recommendation? We had an engineer come in and study the town hall when we were doing renovations, told us what you need to do. And we dipped, we went and dipped, we got money.
So the answer is no, you haven't got that.
Well, you're good. You've got to pick it at your own choice.
No, because, Russ, I'm looking at the outside, but I do, when I'm looking at the law, you enter here, the road be white, you're not using a guardrail. Is there a compromise where you put guardrails, make it safe, fix the corner, but maybe don't make the road as well? I don't know.
No, Craig, the question is...
That's what a professional...
No, Craig, the question is, was an engineer hired? The answer is no, right?
No, I think you can rely on the state engineer.
Well, no, this estimate came up.
It is such a simple question. Was an engineer hired?
So what happened is we saw the problem, we brought it to the select board. The select board, at that point, they were not comfortable spending any money on the road until the taxpayers knew about it. So they made an article to talk about it. And in conversation, they wanted to attach money to the article to talk about it. So instead of doing a Band-Aid, we went with the big picture, an estimate, so that we bring up conversation at town meeting. That's all that they were after was the public's feeling on what to do with the road. It passed, and so now they're trying to backtrack their way into knowing what to do with the money they now have. So, no, they have not done an engineer, they got B-Trans to hear my opinion, just an opinion. So we have a few members that don't want to spend serious money, and we have some members that wanna spend enough to make it safe. And that's what this conversation was supposed to be about was, get me a scope work, and then we can go forward if we thought we needed an engineer. Then we can go forward with getting contractors, firm bids, grants, everything lined up. But it went from an idea to a full-blown scope.
I think that we all want it to be safe. Not just some of us, you think some of us just want it to be safe and some of us don't.
I said full-blown scope or just making it safe. Those are two huge things, and that end the conversation.
Well, it's just making it safe is possibly to be, is possible to be done. I mean, I'm tending to agree with Craig, which is wonderful. And because if that is possible, the fact that nobody's ever gone over the edge there is-
People have gone over the edge there, but that's not, that's not the point. But if, as a board, you all said, this is what we're gonna do for a scope, and then you thought you had, you know, an engineer needed, then I could go forward, but you haven't done that yet. You're still kicking the stone down the road with at least two different options, if not three. So it's hard to get pricing for you, firm pricing, when you're not sure of the scope that you want to spend. So my feeling is, is, let me know, what do you wanna spend? What do you want to do for scope? And then I can, I can give you all the answers that you're after. But right now, I don't have a clue. It's been bounced around and I'm still, I'm trying to help. I, but I don't have the answers.
Can you answer your question, or are you not a writer or engineer?
We answered that. So what I'm hearing you say is that the original thing for town meeting was just to kind of have a discussion about the expense of money that attached. But somehow we were gonna do the project this summer. Was the original intention was to do this project this summer?
Well, depending on how big your project.
No. No, what was presented at town meeting was to do this project that you needed a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Nowhere at town meeting did we talk about doing only a little bit or doing this. And I talked about Adams, who is listed on here as the person that was giving some type of just random estimate, you know, he went out and looked, and he knows his stuff, so he gave numbers. You know, he said to me, you can't do this project in phases the way they wanna do it. So I have been under the impression from the discussion at town meeting till now that this project was gonna happen this summer, and a hundred and seventy thousand dollars was gonna come from the taxpayers. That that was the intention from the beginning, was to do the big project. I remember the discussion going that you whittled it down because you've now realized you can't borrow the money because the article was wrong at town meeting, that you didn't ask for a budget. So that's when we started to whittle down what the scope of the project was. So in the interest of trying to keep me as short as possible, I think that range to do this project in phases, maybe there's some small things you should do for safety right now, but that the entire project needs to be done. You need to hire an engineer so that he can know that you are not responsible if what you do doesn't work. And there is a problem further down the road. I would rather spend a little money upfront to get it right than have somebody crash and die and blame it on the way we engineered it. And go get the grants, the structures grants, the better roads grants, the Grants and Aids, and then say to the town, we need X amount of dollars. This is my budget and my engineer, a drawing. So don't spend a hundred thousand dollars on it this year. Spend thirty thousand on it to do something to make it a little more safe. Close that section. I don't know what you need to do to make it more safe this summer. But I think it's ridiculous to do it in phases if the whole thing is really, and it stays, as I said out there myself, I have an out here, so I agree it's a project that needs to be done. But you guys as a board should not be, you should be given options of what the scope of the project should be, not you figuring it out almost a year later of how much to spend. It's so backwards to me. I think we should stop and start over and hire an engineer, or we do, I don't know. It's just, it's so frustrating. These conversations, every time you ask for big money, it's the same thing. There's no plan, you ask for the money first, then you figure out the plan later. It's every project for the past four years has been like that. And I-
I think we definitely need to spend the money to do the safety issues, the guardrails.
Yeah, I just think we should study that we have available a hundred. I think you can come back and say for now, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, we spent thirty-two thousand of it, put guardrails, make it safe, and we'll come back to the voters next year.
With essentially twenty.
I mean, then you've got to, you've got to set some money aside for an engineer.
Yeah.
That's gonna be part of your budget.
Well, we don't know, we gotta do this, we gotta, we gotta spend it, yeah. This year, right now.
Again, now you're cutting the corner of your bridge closure.
Right, is that twenty-two that the, is that what it-
Could have got pushed back.
Unless it gets pushed back. We just want to brought this all head to circle.
Right, right, that was a good issue.
Who was the, who was the one that decided that if the ground, the road needed to be raised up, had it that-
Between Mark Thicring, Chuck and myself.
And Mark Thicring.
Is a B-Trans engineer.
Oh, he is a B-Trans engineer.
Yes.
So then what is that?
He didn't do a study, he didn't, I don't know, an engineer.
Turn him over, he gave an opinion.
Just gave an opinion.
And I'll tell you, and I'll tell you, if you want a structures grant or any other kind of grant that has federal or state attachments, you need to have it. And maybe we don't want to have federal money. Because there are, I mean, that sidewalk in Penny costs a million dollars because there was federal money involved. So the cost of grants is high. But that's not even, it's not even discussed.
But by the time we get going on the survey, it'll be over. What do we want to do is more, as far as asking Russ to come back next year.
I want the guardrails up.
Definitely, yeah, that's my opinion. What's everybody's opinion, you know, it should be done this summer.
My opinion's been from the very start, that if we didn't do anything else, we also stopped light on both sides of that corner to give ourselves time, which would basically make the corner safe because you are only gonna have one-way traffic on it, one way or the other. That was my opinion at the time, it's still my opinion. Quickest solution that we can do at the moment.
And guardrails, we need the road guardrails.
Guardrails are fine. This road hasn't changed in thirty years that I've known it. It's exactly the same it's ever been. My only concern is that bridge is gonna get closed. And when that bridge gets closed, that road's gonna see a lot of traffic.
And you're not gonna know through traffic sign, that's what we were gonna do in Penny?
I don't know whether it would make any difference.
Oh, not through traffic?
I don't think it would make any difference. People still go through it. Unless you put, unless you actually put a stop, or you comment, stop. They'll still use it, they'll still go for it. I'm trading in my life.
We did not think the traffic line would be that disso, we talked about electrical, right?
If you're going to do it for more than just a few months, then you're gonna need to get electricity to it. If you're going to do it just for a few months, there's rental units that you can, you can see.
Did you say you talked about the electric?
No, wasn't you?
But anyway, that's just my opinion.
I know for sure people, nobody there's watching, just screw it, I've seen that. Up north, the red light, if you wanna go through, you can go over there now. I mean, there's one of those things-
They don't know the traffic on Henry Hill all the time, so I mean, that's-
Well, one of those things, while we're in construction, we might have the rental, that's for sure. You're not gonna let people go through. When we're in construction, try to just close the road.
When you're in construction, you gotta close the road. There's no such thing as having one lane and still work the road. Doing anything.
It doesn't affect, you know, like from one end, from the other end, but they don't have to get through to get to the house if they go from one end to the other, so.
I, I, we need to get guy, my school, if you put guardrails, get an engineer study, get that done this year, you can go into next year with the safety this year, you go into next year with exactly how you're gonna do it. You gotta know, you can do that.
I don't know what the engineer fee would be, but I'll pop ahead. We don't submit it in. That's what the board wants to do.
Bill, we have the motion, we have a-
I made the motion that we authorize Russ to delegate a engineering contract, bid proposal for the Henry Hill Road, and also the cost to install guardrails for the summer.
As a separate?
As a separate.
And not a guardrail, but a mirror or a light, a traffic light, something to address the visibility problem?
We get a cause, what he's doing is a cause, I need you to put that in the motion. Could these all go back over the cost of engineer for-
Engineer, figure the cost of guardrails.
I have the guardrails of the-
Mirror, unless we, yeah. Because those, I mean, I think you don't just have to address the guardrails, but the visibility issue is, to me, is a problem.
Okay, so three things. Engineering cost bid, guardrails and mirrors.
Do you wanna get the cost for the traffic light too, Jalen?
If the rest of the board is not on board with it, it doesn't really matter. It's just the phone call, just make the phone call get the cost of the traffic lights.
All right, come and try it out.
Renting up or putting them up permanently?
I don't think we need to put them up permanently, but we need to put them up during this construction phase.
I just want to ask one more question. I'm the one that mentioned the engineer, Nate mentioned the engineer. Is there a reason, and I'm okay with it if there is, is there a reason why you guys have not wanted to? Because if you don't want an engineering study and there's a legitimate reason, I would like to know it. Like, it hasn't, I don't want it to just be you guys do it because we're here saying it. I wanna understand why it might not affect that in the past.
We just figured it's that big a project.
Okay.
I didn't, I didn't think we were ready to engineer it because we had some kind of scope. But I got a feeling we're just going backwards until we get a little more realistic of what this is gonna cost.
Because if you're not gonna apply for grants, you may not need them. But just tell us upfront, we're not applying for any grants on them, because grants may require them.
I think we're having a discussion right now, not know what an engineer's gonna cost, not know what the guardrails are gonna cost, so we can come back and narrow it down.
I just wanted to understand why maybe it hasn't been explored before, and it wasn't just you, and you're just trying to make me be calm.
Well, I think you need to look into whether you can even pound guardrails in any of that section. Who looks into that, how do you know? Somebody could tell you if you pound it or whatever, the gears are gonna stay or it's gonna force the side of the tank off.
Really, you're so telling me.
Right, so somebody, somebody other than a select board member saying, I want guardrails, and we decide to put guardrails on it, needs to tell you whether you can physically put them there.
Why assume when you go to get the cost or tell you?
You're assuming that, but, you know, given him clear guidance. If the guidance is not there to say, is there a professional who's gonna certify the installation of these guardrails? Install an X, Y, Z man? Or are we just gonna pound them around ourselves?
That goes no.
We don't, we don't do guardrails. It's something that we do use.
Right, just so you need, have an engineer decide whether or not you can-
We have a second option.
Can I just hear your motion, is the motion to authorize Russ to get an engineering cost?
Bid.
Bid guardrails for the summer and mirrors to the corner?
And-
And traffic lights.
And traffic lights.
Yeah, the cost. The cost, yeah.
And the cost, just the cost.
Yeah, just the cost.
And cross lights. And who, did we get a second?
No, we seconded, yeah.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Are opposed? That motion passed. Any more discussion on Henry Hill at this point? Okay. Go on to special town meeting discussion. That's coming right up, so. Do we have the logistics in hand pretty much?
We do. I met with Jim Mattow across the way, with Tim Hardy, and the three of us walked around, picked the best spots with, at nine, nine-thirty quarter or ten, where the sun would be, shade, et cetera. So it's pretty set in what direction we needed to set up to enhance the social distancing and give people a guideline. I asked the school to borrow their line strikers for the ball field so that we can pull grid lines out about six to seven feet so that people know where they can set their foam chairs and six feet apart, and we're not gonna grid it, we are gonna put lines on it. One question I had was porta-potties, how many do you feel you need? We should have at least one.
I want to need one.
Two.
I don't know whether we have, I don't need one.
And we'll have some instructive vehicles to sanitize after themselves.
That's correct, it's gonna have its sanitizing table right beside it. And it'll be directions and et cetera, with all the supplies right there.
Westman Security will lend us a couple of tents. I mean, I'm not sure what would they would be, like something you might have to, obviously we can't have a bunch of people under there, but there's-
I'm sure that's the same tent that I'm getting from Jim.
Oh, okay.
He's going to just have it over, over the moderator in that area. I haven't even asked Chuck to talk to him this afternoon. Having two people from the road crew directing traffic to our park, we can't hinder this parking lot nor the accessibility for the fire department. That field is all parking and it can be used for the town meeting. The town meeting is actually gonna be over by the trees in the swing sets more. So that should work. Um, I think that's it. But it seemed to work pretty well with how many people can fit there, et cetera.
Now, we have a P A system?
We aren't going to use a P A system. Um, I haven't talked to Fletcher yet, but we can't pass around the mic. So, um, the public will have to speak up and so will Fletcher.
Right.
I haven't talked to him, um, since this morning when I met with these guys.
Yeah.
But it was mentioned that asking Floyd Lawrence, um, if he would help us out with this, um, microphones and et cetera, but that's not gonna work if, um, if we can't pass the mic around.
They would wait, because Fletcher had.
And it might, it might.
Some might.
It might. But he's, he's, he's got a lot of explaining to do at this group of people, no matter how many show up, so I would think he should have a microphone anyway, even though it's gonna be using it. Okay.
So, what is the authorized number of people that can be at this event? Outside or at for a vote?
So far, they did not put a number on outside meetings. They said, um, the election director said that an outside meeting, um, for a town vote would be acceptable, and no one would take it. Uh, so as long as you, you practice your social distancing and you make sure you have all the facilities that you need, um, and you're handing out, you know, any facilities that need to be protected, then you're, you're good to go.
The sanitizing table, is, is it just that, is it the end sanitizer, or is there, I mean, a lot of it became, or almost?
I have some. I have a little water, sorry, should I put that, should I have that out there? There'll be sprays, there'll be, um, paper towels, there'll be sanitary wipes, there'll be, um, uh, you know, misters, um, for your hands. There'll be much, like, honestly, you know, gloves. So.
I think there'll be some water there.
And we talked about soap and water. That's, that's, sorry, what we're looking at, but I haven't, I haven't done all of them. So what, four is yet.
People are being asked to move their own chairs, too, so. It's only a week and a half, why? Hope for good run-up.
That's my last question.
What did you rank?
Continue, can you play it for me?
There isn't, it's range, right?
Yeah, you have to activate, and you can't go inside.
Last time.
I think that's, that's an exclusion, that, that, that people that can't just stand outside. We can't predict how many people will come. We can't predict how many, how many are inside. But you have to plan. You have to have.
What, contingency goes with that other thing?
Yes.
Well, I, the other contingency is we don't have the budget, I guess, we postpone the meeting. I mean, I, because, I mean, what else are we gonna do?
You gotta ask them to stand out on their enlightenment form till we get a meeting. We can always delay it a little.
We get a adjournment, oh, yeah, we get a adjournment.
We could, yeah, we could actually say, we're rather, delay it till one o'clock, yeah, yeah. Good question.
We could recess it for two days, once we start the meeting.
Yeah, once you open the meeting here, we could just.
What about the articles, there are any questions? No, you're not very close, you're gonna be.
In your package, you have your fax sheets.
That's, we're still, we're saying that we're really not gonna read any question.
He's reading the article, but you're going to explain the article.
Right. They're getting free.
Nobody asked you a question. It's a quick.
Anything else?
This, Russ, we're not gonna have any, like, you know, we went through all the town meetings, we're not gonna have, we're not gonna have any of the representative speakers or articles enough. This is just this meeting and that's it.
Correct. What do you mean, not the articles?
There's no other, no, no other discussion of an article than the past. You can't bring it up.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Whatever's here, that's it. That's no more discussion about it.
But I got the three articles. Yeah.
Somebody asked you a question about the schools.
Right.
By order.
Okay, anything else on stuff for town meeting, no? Want a new business, um, sand supply for next winter, I think you want to hear about that program?
Yep.
Yeah.
Anyone else? We, uh, at the end of this year, we have about five hundred yards of sand left in Westminster West. I purchased fifteen hundred yards, already hauled it in, so that gives us two thousand yards, it's about one feet, normally have. Uh, this pile over here, we had roughly a thousand yards left over from the seven I purchased last year. I've got twenty-five hundred hauled in now, and I'm gonna haul another twenty-five hundred for this coming year. Normally, that's what we get, is five thousand yards. Last year, because Renault was going out of business, we got some extra, thinking that we were gonna have extra, then we had this, whether it was nothing but ice, we used more sand than normally.
So, Ross, after, this year, you're worried for the next year, then?
So, we're all set for this coming year.
Yep.
And.
We have, like, we have a bunch of severages, we all accept that.
That's correct.
Okay. No, I need you to come.
Thank you, Chuck. Uh, okay, executive session on contractual matter. We have a motion for an executive session.
That's, if that's, has to do with what I'm supposed to have, I don't have it with me tonight, so.
Yeah, okay, so I guess we should postpone that, then?
You can.
Okay. Well, we'll postpone B, under executive session on a contractor matter. Uh, resignation letter.
In your package, you have a resignation letter from Doug Hoffman Hall, um, as a minister. We will post the position, as we do the three. And I recommend that we send him a letter, thanks for his service.
Need a motion to second this resignation?
Yes, you do.
I know.
Moved in second, we accept the resignation of Doug Hoffman Hall, send him a letter.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I hope that passed. Okay, manager's report.
Um, I'm in fact, well, the property did not sell, according to the last meeting. Um, are we interested in pursuing the raft? As we talked about months ago.
Did you say you have to say that, or did you have some other people who were interested, or?
They have not come through.
Yeah.
So, at this point, um, the legal counsel told us to wait till, till June first, and then come back to him with the board's, um, opinion about, about this. Um, I'm just throwing it out there because we get, you know, time, it's not like it's urgent, um, to have the raft, or more, you're vocal on it, but, um.
Do we have a raft, or?
No, no, this is, this is a, just a thought I had, and so I passed it along to you, also, when I said to the legal counsel, and he said it's legal. Um, we've done everything we can to sell the land, posted it, we've put it in the Gazette, I mean, I can't even tell you any months, and so it's time to get the town to get their money back, so, um, this is a pretty interesting way to do it.
Do you, okay, uh?
So, I, I don't ask you, I'm not asking you for a vote, because it is just a manager's report, so.
Some details on how that would work?
Just, I will continue, um, sort of researching it, making sure that it is legal and appropriate.
That's basically, you know.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you, Russ.
Trash stickers are approximately half done, um, with help of Nancy Delzell. They'll be mailed to mid to late June, as always. We did have a, a lot of issues with our grant list and, um, in, inputs that were not correct, so that we're, we're doing a lot of correcting, um, while we're doing it, so it's taking a little bit longer. But we're managing, we're, we're on the mend, and we're, um, again, gonna be on schedule for those. Wyndham County Sheriff is continuing the conversations about having a full-time animal control officer. Two weeks ago, roughly, I joined a Zoom meeting with, um, Sheriff Anderson, the town funding Karen Astley and myself, to talk over the needs, obstacles, and overall vision from Wyndham County, County Sheriff's view. It would not be just, just two towns, he's talking about, um, as many towns in Wyndham County as we could get together. The issues that we're seeing is that towns have different ordinances and, and different needs. So, that would have to be a, a contract that, that he would come to towns and say, you know, what, what is your need, what's your service, um, like? Do you have an animal control officer that can, can fill in for, um, the simple things? So, it's a conversation that's going, and as more information comes, of course, I'll, I'll give it to you. Uh, just an FYI, Greenup Day is March thirtieth, Saturday, we've given out quite a few bags already. They will be giving them out at the plant sale, um, this coming Saturday, for, who's them on?
October.
The following Saturday.
How late is it?
And Susan, we have a school on March thirtieth. What time?
May seventh.
Seventh and tenth, actually.
May thirtieth.
March fourth. May thirtieth, sorry.
Um, we do this, it's March third.
It's May, it's May thirtieth, sorry.
March. Okay.
First.
Can you call Adam, help, quickly give me your number, so I can call on the town, or it'll be there.
Uh, he knows you're gonna be there, we have talked to him.
Okay.
Uh, but I will touch base with him, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to let him know.
At this point, you need to join March thirtieth, though.
Sorry.
Back, back to the sheriff. Um, can we have a conversation with him about maybe, uh, helping us control the roads when they're posted? Maybe a couple of towns get together and get scales and wind them, educate it, so we can.
You mean for waiting?
Let's, let's, yeah, I'll, they're gonna up the order. There'll be three or four towns get together, they purchase scales, they send the sheriff to the state school to learn how to use them, and they make enough money back from fines that more than pay for it.
What fines do you get, two hundred?
I forgot, new horse, um, but I went to a class, he was gonna go, he got busy, but, yeah, and they, that's what everybody's doing, because it's a problem.
Is that, is that, is that, posters are ready, posters?
Yeah, well, to, to, to enforce it, we post it every year, but that's like, just gonna output those posters up, it's.
But the force would be to scale, some sort of.
Right, so, so because the sheriff's currently holding one,
Right.
we split the cost between two or three towns.
Uh huh.
Um, actually, the town of Wyndham was really interested in it, with somebody else. So, we got two or three camps involved, and wouldn't, price would be as bad.
The other, the other end, you know, the state, if you were trained, they pick him up by axles, and they don't have it. They just know he's way all the way, and they give him a fine. And if he has to fight it, then he has to go to scale away.
Right, but, but they're not even.
No, they're, I'm, I'm on the first step, we need to get the sheriff trained.
Correct.
When he sees the log trail come out, or the pump trail today, he's not twenty-five thousand pounds, right?
So, could you, or Russ, a couple of towns, just to see?
First, we gotta get, talk to sheriff, see if they're willing to do it.
I was gonna say, by the scale, because I'm gonna use it, to, to go back to the sheriffs.
Right, yeah, once we get the sheriff on, we're like, we're gonna go and talk to. Whoever.
So, that's something we could do, Russ, you could do it, or you can.
Yep.
And last, uh, tax grievance hearings are going to be held Friday, uh, the fifth of June. Anyone wishing to set up an appointment must call the town hall and set up a time. They sent down a roughly working letters, assessment changes, and we've heard from three right now. Um, we're expected to hear probably from up to ten or so, whatever, but.
And how will you handle this?
I'm sorry?
How will you handle the grievance hearing?
It buys them, they're, they're set up to, to take care of it by either a phone call or.
I, uh, we have this. The day that the next meeting is made, twenty-seven, right, that's not. We have a meeting for that. Boards and commissions are next. Are we good on that, boards and commissions?
Yeah, we just have, we just, we have a contract.
Right.
Uh, has, we still got, I'm making some, something else to.
Planning commission.
Other business?
Um, the two gentlemen that wrote us a letter complaining about how we cut, treated down the end of, David, Dr. Snus, wrote, uh, Chuck, sent me a text, emailed, emailed back, that you went and cleaned it up, whatever day it was, said that whoever was there was really polite, really nice people, did a great job cleaning up, and he says he wants to pass on his gratitude for what you did. I have a question, this, has the board made the decision to not continue with Zoom for this meeting into the future?
Uh, I believe that maybe we're going to have a Zoom meeting and probably this also. An in-person meeting of some sort, plus a Zoom option for people who wanna Zoom. I believe that's how we left it, yeah.
So, but this meeting is not, this meeting is not done?
This is not a meeting, yeah.
Was there a reason?
Knew it.
Who?
Felt this would be, yeah. We, we went over this before.
No, but he asked him, so I.
Yeah.
I haven't heard of it yet.
Yeah. No, we figured this would be adequate, because there would be enough space, social distancing, blah, 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 and that's.
What was that, so I'm not trying to bicker with you, I'm just trying to understand why the decision was made. Why did you decide that people outside wouldn't want to see this meeting, being that it is an open meeting?
Well, we figured if they wanted a closed meeting, there would be.
You knew you could have more than people?
This is a fact, too.
What's that?
This is a fact, too, yeah.
Oh, so you, yeah, like, you would see, right, but then that would be after, like.
But they would see you Zoom, too. Right, the tax TV would Zoom.
So, it was just a lighthearted decision to not have Zoom?
It should be one, but I'm more of a.
I don't know, but we're lighthearted.
So, the last one was, this one's not, the next one isn't, is it, is this how we're gonna go, in and out, in and out? Okay, thank you for the answer.
Um, any other business?
I just wanted to let you guys know that I was appointed to the recycling committee for the town of Rockingham, because I, um, live in Westminster, was one of the reasons, and my finance background, so if you have any input that you would like me to bring into that.
Why would you give that?
I have no meeting yet, frankly, I don't know.
How often do you need?
We're, they're planning the first meeting right now. They're hoping to have us tied up for forty-five day time period, and then have recommendations.
Yeah.
Have we, speaking of that, I was gonna bring that up, but we have, we have a feedback, Jeff, I mean, to, uh, Joel, the area that does the public, to see if you, if we do get voted out of the recycling center, it's even possible that he would ever, the girl who set it up, um, maybe one day a week, in their town, will be there, you see what I'm saying? We, we can't vote. We would soon, I would soon, the voters would comfortable, say, what do you, can we do?
What do you need to wait to see?
I was gonna say that, it was like, wow.
I think you're a little ahead of the game, because I don't know.
This was just a, a sheet that I gave you, was just some thoughts, and it wasn't.
No, they've been, actually, they've been talking about, and I just thought, to be at the main sheet, there's a good man, and you could. Sheet of something that, you know, Saturday morning, we can have it for Westminster residents. I'm, I'm telling you, $35, if you're saving $35 for anybody in Westminster, it goes towards something, you know? If I have it, I'm not saying for, this is.
Well, seriously, we have not, we haven't met yet, like, something like, no, that I was asked to be on it. And I agreed to be on it, and we're having our first meeting next week, so.
Thank you, thank you.
If there's anything you want me to say, when I'm here.
Sure, we'll have a question for you. Uh, any other business? Date of the next meeting?
Should be June 10th. Please, somebody else check it on their phones.
Yeah, the third, the third, sorry.
So the question is?
June 7th. Second, when?
It's June 10th.
It's June 10th.
Should be.
And so, um, the question is, do we wanna have a Zoom only? If we have an in-person, excuse me, plus a Zoom, where would we wanna?
I think, we, you keep talking, we have executive session for this contract, I think, so if we could at least be in a room, I don't know. It's really difficult to have a conversation for executive session. So if we could at least have a meeting, have a meeting room where we could all meet, but always have it on Zoom, then we could have an executive session.
Right, right. So what kind of?
It wouldn't be like this.
No, so, could, I mean, and we'll, we'll assume that everything's the same, things aren't gonna change in two weeks.
Can we have us there?
Upstairs?
The town hall.
I would have to measure to see how many people would actually fit in there legally.
What about?
I'm sorry?
You're gonna have.
He was just talking about having an executive session.
Yeah.
You gotta meet in person, right? I mean.
No, well.
Well, we would have a meeting where presumably, I, and is this legal? We can say the board, just the board is meeting, and, and then, because we have a Zoom option, nobody else can come in.
Again, Zoom, so there's one.
Oh, yeah, you could close off. You can have a second meeting.
That's what I'm saying, this group can only have seven people, which is the town manager, us five, and Zoom.
I don't, I don't think upstairs, and I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, is big enough for the seven of us, plus the camera.
Well, I'm, someone did, I'll have an answer.
I think Craig was saying it's difficult to discuss.
They, we only here, in this hall, beyond the public. I guess if we had it in a room in there, I'd have a problem.
Well, that, of course, I mean, you're supposed on a pole, and Greg, et cetera, again.
But you can have it on Zoom without anybody else being in it, if you have it as a separate meeting.
What?
What is the separate?
Well, I mean, you know, you sign in for on Zoom, so people are watching it, and.
Right. What we're saying, what we're trying to do is have an in-person meeting of the select board and a Zoom option for people. And it wouldn't be, if you, you could do either, if you remember the public, you couldn't come, you could only come in on Zoom because we, we wouldn't have the room.
And why, why would we not do it?
All by Zoom?
Yeah.
Because they were, we're all separate, we never, Chuck, we, we've never really been able to have executive discussion with the five of us.
No, well.
With Zoom, so.
When we're here, we're talking about two separate things. She's talking about just the meeting.
Right, so you're talking about us, we've all been home when we're doing the pack. I'm saying, instead of us two home, be in one, one place. We have a right to be in one place, and you could.
But.
Yeah, and what do you say, are you saying have a regular meeting, and then over here have an executive session?
You have to have an ID to get into the meeting.
Right.
And so if you have your regular meeting with that ID, and you announce that ID to everybody so that they can also be in the meeting.
Right.
But then you have another meeting for an executive session that has a different ID, and that would only be given to us five of us.
We discussed that before, but we're still not, the five of us is the same room, we're always, we're always home.
So you're saying, yes, do Zoom, and they'll.
Just do Zoom. I'm just saying, if we actually had a meeting, it's easier, because every time we did Zoom, if she talked, them talked, or we do Zoom, the way I'm talking about, you're filming, just like he is now, just filming the whole select board in the town meeting, well, we're no longer on Zoom. People were coming, they're on Zoom, but they get to see the whole group of us while we're having this meeting. The way you're talking about, we all stay home, and we're all just on.
The way they did the last couple of times, which, yeah.
Well, I don't care, it's okay.
Yeah, oh, well, I like the idea of the in-person meeting, and if, you know, if the problem, having other people here, then we'll just have the select board and then have a Zoom option, and the public can only attend by Zoom. That's, why you looking at me like that, Kevin?
That's fine. You've just gotta get real good at it, because when you're in the discussion, your eyes have to be on that computer, or, or I can be looking at the computer.
Well, I.
You don't have, you don't.
This would be my primary job, but people can see it.
Yeah, my last.
Yes, they can.
Yeah, so you don't.
Would you still put it Zoom?
Yes, I understand.
I have a question.
Yes.
You can make it, did Alex make it to live over there yet?
Yes.
Go live? You, we can make it go live, if you want to count it. I mean, if we're getting, if we're gonna go, it'll go live, everybody will see whoever to present.
We have the capability of going live.
That's what Zoom would work, that's what I'm assuming.
No, no, this is going live through the TV.
Right, just like Rockingham, Rockingham comes on when they're doing their select board meeting, it says, like, it says it's live. There's the select board, and they can Zoom in, you know?
So anybody can see it, not just people who.
Right, it goes right through.
Zoom allows you to come into the meeting, but if you wanna stay at home and watch it, you're watching a live one. I guess you got time to run, run over and go, I don't like what you just said, and Zoom in to get in, but you don't have to Zoom, because you're watching it on TV. That's where I was envisioning that.
So to me, it's two different things. To view the, 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 the meeting is one thing, but to participate in the meeting.
You can't.
Right.
Different both, you've gotta do Zoom, or you've gotta have a phone, um, conference call.
He would still do, I mean, go look at the, the, basically, when you watch Rockingham, there's the three or four selectmen all in one room. They're filming it, but it's live, and then you'll see this camera come up, and something zoom, just like, you know, stuff in the corner. Watch Rockingham, that's what they're doing, and that's what I'm saying. The select board's there, so you're filming it live, you can Zoom in, or you can Zoom and watch it.
So, um, what if people wanna do, like, my, I'll tell you what my purpose would be, which is, if, if it's all right with Cole or Greg or whoever, that we would meet in there because there'd be plenty of room just for the select board, and then the public could only attend by Zoom, and we would have a Zoom.
Yes, they film it live, and even get out more people.
So I'm gonna be on Zoom, and.
Or I will be, or whoever's running the meeting, but maybe we'll need someone on Zoom over there, which is fine. Someone to dig people in and out.
They could need to get together and discuss that. So is this to say that there'll be one camera on the five of you?
Uh, I'm not sure.
That's what I was thinking, but if you watch the other meetings, and they're Zoomed, and also, while you're watching the meeting. I, I think you need to hit all the balance and see what.
That would be if we all had our laptops, then you would see each of us, right? We would eat, because that's our camera, so we would each have.
If we're Zooming.
If we're Zooming, or we would all be, say, here we are in the fire department, and then there would be a laptop here that just shows.
The people that have called in.
Right.
Right, and they, but how would they hear, would they hear what's going on?
On Zoom, they would, yeah.
But they wouldn't see it, right? They would just, they would just, there would just be one laptop, here's Russ.
They would be watching you.
They would see Russ, but they.
They would actually see Russ, yeah.
But could they hear the? So that.
The others should pick it up, right? Whoever's speaking will pick it up.
Right.
But they won't see them.
You won't see them the way we did last time, unless we all wanna ring our laptops and.
We're all ringing them.
I don't have laptops, unless towns can buy me one, and I can see it.
That's not an issue, I can.
Okay, so are we kind of clear on?
I think you need to. I'll talk to Alex, and I'll, I'll call you and let, you know, what's up, and then you can let everybody else know.
Well, do we, and is that what we wanna do?
Oh, I don't.
Have a.
That's, I think, I think we should, I, I'm quite happy with having the meeting here, in person, and having the rest of it on Zoom, that's.
Yes, thank you, that's what I would like to do.
Everybody wants to do, so let's do it that way.
Yeah, and what about the option, if we can be inside, because it's easier when.
I don't think that's necessary at this point in time, and we, we are so, we're so befuddled on this whole COVID-19 thing, why, why push the envelope right now? We can do it out here, we can go into executive session, doesn't have to be anybody but us here. Well, the only reason I thought it sounded good, but whatever. All we do is listen to ourselves, so it's not gonna be tape. What did you say?
That's all. And since, uh, so, and then I guess, you know, we're living with people and just tell them, you know, you can only attend by Zoom, so. Okay? Do we know what we're doing, sort of?
Next part is between Zoom and in-person.
Zoom and in-person, here at the fire department.
Okay.
Yes, you do.
Okay?
Yep.
Make a motion, we should, second.
Moved in second, you're in this meeting, on favor? I oppose.